Commissioner with TDEC, they rightfully so wouldn't walk into a meeting knowing what they're facing, without knowing what they're facing, if that makes sense. So, we're gonna, anybody that's having any concerns, it's gonna, this is a very random, I mean, we're not saying stand up, state your name and address and all that, you know, just let us know what problems you have, so we'll know if they're all the same problems. I can tell you from my office, what I'm hearing since I came into office in September, we do not have all the same problems. I feel like we do have a mutual problem, but then not every problem's been the same so far. We've had, we've got a story where I've seen the application, it's over a year out right now, I don't know what the issue is with that, but I also don't work in that field. So, I wanna hear what you guys, what you guys are facing. We're gonna send it to them very soon after this meeting, we're gonna have another one. And the Department of Environmental Conservation said they would be here, and so did Representative Reardon, he will be here. And, but, they wanna know first what's going on. I can't answer that, I don't, I've never built a house from ground up, I've flipped a ton of them, I've never built one from ground up and dealt with the issues that these people are calling me about daily, so...
I think the biggest issue that we're running into is the time period from the start of the application until it all gets approved. I think, 'cause I know of a house, we'd love to build a house out here close to the lake, but it's been since last September that I've been trying to get, or my client's been trying to get a septic permit, and it's, there's just no go-between between Stewart County or the builder, there's nobody in Stewart County to help us with the state, you know, with the state office.
Yeah, that's what I wanna ask, is why we don't have somebody in Stewart County taking care of Stewart County?
And, I understand we don't have Building and Codes, the Building and Codes office here in Stewart County, like some of the other counties that are around us, some do, some don't, however, it seems to have gotten worse whenever they took everything away from Jackson and moved everything, the whole state, to Nashville. Everything went downhill from that point right there. It's like now you have to deal with downtown Nashville, and getting through is obviously difficult because there's however many people in the state of Tennessee. And, you know, my client's not the only guy trying to build a house.
Sure.
So, that, I think that's where the problem we're running into. We don't have a point of contact, a local point of contact, or even a regional point of contact. All we have is a state point of contact which everybody else in the state also has.
We also have issues with getting soil scientists to our county.
So, if I could say one thing, I spoke to the state on that specific issue, her name is Ms. Blair Vey, she's their head lady counsel for TDEC, or for that, of course, for TDEC. And every time I would say the word "soil scientist," she would remind me they are not under their control. Now, with that being said, business-minded me says, if you're gonna mandate that we do something in the state of Tennessee, you need to have enough to fulfill...
Their obligation.
Their obligation, correct. So, and I don't, from the numbers I'm hearing, I was told by someone of them that, they said 99 is what they started out with, and now they're down to like 30 in the state, or something like that. So, when I ask, one of my questions to the state is, is why are we not supporting a program that'll bring these kids out of high school and tell them, "You can make all the money you wanna make." Literally, there's an open wallet there, 'cause nobody in this room, if you had a soil scientist that said, "I can be out there next week, but I'm gonna charge you $100 more," what would you do? Get here next week and I'll give you two. I mean, that's the way it is. And, and they literally have an open checkbook right now to get out here and make money, but who's telling these kids that? Who's telling these agriculture majors in college, "I know you wanna do this, but you can make a whole lot of money doing this, and you're still doing, you know, in the soil world."
Yeah, and that's a great point.
That's one of my questions to them, why are they not building that up if they know there's clearly a problem?
Yeah, and that, and that's a great point, and that would solve it if they had some sort of program, even at Ostopee, they've got a agricultural program over there. But, whenever we go to the state for something like that, I wanna, I wanna, I keep on asking the question, "What can I do to solve the problem in the next six months?" And I get the deer in the headlights look, of course, you know.
There's no...
There's not one, and nobody's thinking about it because, honestly, they don't have time to think about it right now. 'Cause I don't wanna bash them down in Nashville, but they don't have time to think about it because as soon as they hang up the phone with me, she's calling. And then she's calling, and then she's, and then he's calling.
Right.
So, they don't really have time to think about that kinda stuff, unfortunately. And, so, my question would be to the state, what can we do to solve this problem in the next six months, not in the next six years?
And, we also have to consider that our county is landlocked. We're landlocked by federal government properties, state government properties, our room to grow here is as small as it is. We have commissioners sitting here, we have to look at, you know, how are we going to continue to grow if we're also now being kind of set back and locked when it comes to septic issues in this community as well? As a great community, people wanna live here, we need the tax revenue, we've got budget issues, we've gotta look at all of that as a whole, in general, as to...
I just wanted to mention, you said that there was 99 of those scientists or whatever, and now there's 30 something. Back when they used to have our license plates, they had them numbered by population, we were number 84. So, we're pretty down, pretty far down on the population, and, you know, it feels like that's how we're being treated too, you know? 'Cause we're so far, you know, we're just a small county.
Right.
You know, I could see having two rural counties like maybe Houston and Stewart, where you might wanna combine the effort, you know, between two rural counties like that, but, you know, I don't like the idea that we've got Nashville in our business, you know, but that's me.
If we're in Nashville, it was Clarksville, or Montgomery County. So, and I know Montgomery County, I'm currently living there, the building has kind of slowed down a lot, uh, due to the interest rate or whatever. Bottom line is, why can't we go back to Montgomery County again and get this and start coming back up? I mean, we tried to do that, I came in late, so I don't...
They're not there, they shut them off instead of...
I guarantee they have...
So, everybody comes out of...
And... Something that I would like to say, if you build a house, you've got to have electrical inspected. The state has got electrical inspectors that comes and inspects the electrical part of the house. That's a requirement for the state. If the state is gonna require a septic permit, then they need to provide the personnel to come and do the inspections on it. I've got two right here in this folder, they've got $1,000 of my money, 500 of it for way over a year, and another 500 for about seven months, and I've got nothing, except a bunch of excuses.
That's right.
I've even got a permit here on some apartments that my brother and I own, it was approved, which it was 20 years ago when it was approved, for the fourth building, and he didn't, my stepfather chose not to build the fourth building, we're trying to get the fourth building built, and they're telling us, and they even give me the paperwork, so they've got it, where it was already all approved, nothing has changed, it's just like that field, nothing at all has changed. They're saying now I've gotta have all of the current systems that's there surveyed and drawn on a grid, then I've gotta have a grid showing where all the backup, where the...
Secondary.
Secondary one would go in case things fail, that's been working with no issues for 20 years, and then they would consider me getting a permit for the new building to build. If they're gonna require it, just like they require electrical inspection, then they need to provide the personnel to do the job.
You told the media, you could hold me?
To be honest, this is a starting spot, I didn't introduce myself, I'm Robert Beech, newly-elected mayor here. But, so, one of the hot topics, when I was out going around the county election year, I sent about 3,000 folks, I could get to everybody, but one of the main hot topics was, "What are we gonna do about sewer, sewer, sewer?" And, and that's across the river, but then, to narrow that down, became septic issues. And then when you narrow that down more, it's not really septic issues, it's permit issues. And it's handcuffed the growth that we have here. The kinda growth that we have going on, I'll use Mr. Lewis for an example, the kinda growth, that's the kinda growth we want, we want a family coming in here, setting a house on five acres, and paying that property tax. We, right now, our infrastructure cannot house hundreds of houses, we can't do it right now. I don't, I think that's a good thing to sit in your living room and say, "That's the growth we want, but we can't house that right now." So, we have to target these, what we're doing, on acres, and two acres, and four acres, and getting the property tax off that, that's the growth that we're facing right now. But, we can't even do that, from what I'm hearing now. I mean, it's...
So, of course, we're agents, and of course, we have buyers and sellers, buyers want to buy property, sellers want to sell property. And when we get under five acres, of course, they're wanting a soil scientist to come out and look at the property, so we pay for a survey, a grid survey, we pay our $500 for our permit, and then we are completely stopped, because we cannot get a soil scientist to come here. They will come to the surrounding counties, but they will not come here. I've been waiting myself on a person, on a person, a lot of mine, since July the 5th, and I beg, I beg every soil scientist on that list, finally got one to come, he came last week, which it usually costs five or $600 for him to come, paid him $1,750 to do a soil test.
That's another thing too, I got some folks wanting to get them a system put in, nobody wants to put them in, so they price them ridiculously high. Well, you either pay that ridiculously high price, or you don't.
So, there is a, when they won't come here, there's some kind of problem between the soil scientists and state. There's a reason why they don't wanna come here. We have begged them, we've said, "What if we line you up six or seven in one day, so you will come here, so you will make your money?" They will not come. The guy that we were lining for years will not come here anymore. So, there is a problem, and we just want the state's help to fix it. You know, we're not here to bash them, but we want them to help us. And if a particular system won't work, help us figure out what will work.
Alternatives, many alternatives.
We do need alternatives.
And not $28,000 alternatives either.
So, I mean, when we start to tell people about the process that they're gonna have to go through to buy a piece of property, they just say, "Forget it." Either the contract expires, or they say, "Forget it." I cannot imagine what these installers are up against.
Well, yeah, let me add too, you just said you had one come from Franklin that charged $1,750, and that is still no guarantee, because the state can come back and say that they, that he was wrong, and they will approve it.
Correct, so then the soil, from what I've heard, the soil scientist in return, just like mine, he says that the soil is good. So, he says, "Well," he said, "they're having so much problems, so many problems that..." So, like, the state comes in and says, "No, you can't do it." Well, me, the landowner, the person that's paid for it, goes back to that soil guy and says, "I want my money back. You told me that this was good enough soil, so they want their money back." So, you know, you kinda can't blame them to some degree, but what has made them so upset about coming here? How can we fix that? How can we get them back here?
There needs to also be, I've looked at this for over two years now, and when Robin was mayor, we sat down and looked at a bunch of stuff as well. One of the reasons why I decided to get involved with industrial force, try to help some of this stuff. In the paperwork from Tennessee State Law, it lays out how the process is to go, and soil scientists is actually supposed to be the last option if you fail. They're supposed to come in and help you figure out. We are not getting that, that's not how this is happening. And if you go talk to certain people, I'm not calling names right now, but if you go talk to certain people, they will say, "Well, that's a misrepresentation, you know, people are misreading that, that's not how it's supposed to be." Well, it's, it's there, you go dig and look it up, look at it, it is there, it clearly says that, yes, you do have to do the minor flood, yes, you do have to do the soil grid, which is surveyor to do that. I didn't build my house where I wanted to build my house at, because soil scientists, that I did to come in, said we were good to go. Once we done our park test, they said, "Oh, you've got lax soil." Why all of a sudden do we have so much lax soil in our county? 'Cause that's one of the things that comes up constantly on our, on our failures, is you've got lax soil. Every lot around me has a house on it, every lot. Mine's right in the middle, couldn't build there, on the water.
You know, years ago, it used to be common knowledge that up around Woodlawn area, that ground didn't perk good, and, you know, they had alternatives to that. If you, if the ground didn't perk good, you had to add, add more fill line, link to your fill line. They had ways of making it work, you know, I don't think, I don't think they do that now, I mean, for whatever reason, it would work if they wanted, wanted to dredge it.
That's what I'm saying.
Now, this, I know one case where a guy had to actually buy it right away from his neighbors to run his fill lines to get them long enough, you know, 'cause it didn't perk, you know? But, but at least they got to do it.
I think it all goes back to where we started with this. You used to be able to call Jackson to do all this, you used to be able to call Clarksville to do all this, or this side is Montgomery-Clarksville. Now, you have to call Nashville. They condensed it down, and I understand why they do, but now they're so overwhelmed down there that we can't get anything done out here in Stewart County, and the surrounding area, Houston County, and places like that, because we, Nashville can't support what the entire state needs, as far as people, as far as the service that needs to be provided to builders, homeowners, wherever it is. They don't have the personnel to provide the proper service, and that's why we're running into, it takes me a year to get a perk test, or a soil scientist to come out here, out here in, you know, Stewart County.
When Mr. James was here, did he just work for the county, or was he with Montgomery County, or Stewart Houston?
Stewart, yeah.
I know that's been on...
Stewart, yeah.
Yeah, Stewart Houston. I can remember not, and I might not have should have heard it, but from 16 to 30, I never heard of these issues, but, not saying he was, I just didn't hear a lot about them.
I can, I can tell you about Bob, he was a helpful person, he wanted to help, and we don't have that now. My personal experience with problems were probably 2010, I had a lot in Montgomery County in an approved subdivision that had been approved 30 years prior to me buying. And I bought two lots there, put a house on one, everything worked perfect, wasn't no problem. The next one I did a few years later, went in to get the permit, does it all, it's supposed to be sold map, then was sold subdivision is approved, well, they had two lots in separate sections that come together, and the soil scientist over here said, "Well, it's this type soil." Wanted to do this section, said, "It's a different type soil," and they couldn't agree, so they just lagged and sold the subdivision as approved, and had a part of my lot that wasn't a soil map. So, we looked and looked. I learned a lot since then. Tim Jeanette helped me through this, and we, we looked, long story short, had to get a man from Oak Ridge to come down, that was a soil scientist and a consultant, right there and dig holes in the back hole, figure out what to do. They told me I could put in a low-pressure system, which is, you know, twice as much as a normal system. No reason a normal system wouldn't work, it was exactly the same as a lot next door. When we dug into the ground, we had the same kinda flourish, which is rocks, just chomped rock loose in the soil. No reason, just, just stuff that people didn't agree on, and they let me sold like that, it wasn't right. All right, at the time, I was trying to build a house for my daughter, and if y'all that are realtors will remember, they had an $8,500 tax credit for her first-time home loan interest. All right? By the time I worked through all that mess trying to get me a septic permit, which I eventually got approved for a low-pressure system, it was too late to build a house and hard take advantage of the $8,500 tax credit. So, anyway, we moved on, didn't build a house, I eventually sold that lot to somebody else, put in an approved permit that had expired after 30 years, so he had to pay for it again, but the work had done been done. Everything about groundwater system takes way too long, but it's really, the national office in this area is having problems. I did some work in West Tennessee, I did a subdivision down there, went down there, nicest people you've ever dealt with, willing to help, I went through a whole lot of the same process, I mean, everybody's on the same page, what the rules are, nobody disagreed. Soil scientists don't disagree, and people in groundwater don't disagree, they're on the same page. But, getting to approve stuff in time and manner is a thing of the past in Middle Tennessee.
Have you got yours approved out here on 120 yet?
120, yeah, this took me almost two years, I finally got it approved here. And I got right here, all this is permits, there was, it ought to have been four lots and, you know, five lots. And this is all emails and correspondence with Sarah Tenox, and she's one of the environmentalists that got this project, and she's not helping. She won't answer her emails, she won't do the text, in a long period of time, almost two years getting it done, from the time it first started. Got all that documented right here. My daughter, my family got in, so far, about to lose my tech room I didn't wanna do, so I just told my daughter, "I need you to start doing emails so we have documentation every time we talk to them, documentation." Took forever, but I've got it all right here. Anyway, I eventually got it done, but you don't tell them what it cost me in time, y'all know what the market did, you know? Good money, and now it's going the other way, and it's cost me at least three house projects on that property that you mentioned, that I didn't get done when I could have sold it in the high market.
And see, the problem is, it's not just costing them money, the people that are wanting to move in to Stewart County, it's costing them money, because whenever they get pre-approved for a house or something like that, that pre-approval has, does have a limit. That limit's usually 90 days? Roughly 90 days? Well, in 90 days in this market, you might get 4.5% today, and in 90 days, it might be 6.5. Well, guess what? That's costing you hundreds of dollars a month.
There's no telling what it's cost this county, especially the realtors, and the people that are wanting to live here that didn't get to do what they wanna do, it's like you, you know? We're bound to build like that, all right? The end of that story I was telling you was, we called, and emailed, done everything, finally got to a point, we wasn't getting any response, so we tried to call the Nashville office, no way, couldn't get nobody to answer the phone in Nashville. My daughter was doing this, she said, "Okay." I just, she just looking through the website, and there was a Jackson office number, she called the people in Jackson, not the nicest person you ever dealt with, and this lady was so helpful, and she said, "I would get my boss to get on this project to help you get it done, 'cause this is just not right." She said, "We are in the service business," is what she said to my daughter. And that's not what we got here, but we're doing it. This girl I'm telling you about, the environmentalist on this project, she had done, quit going, that happened in the last 20, 30 months, I believe, about exactly when she left, and she's out in the picture, she was out in my picture a long time before that, 'cause she wouldn't respond anyway.
I agree.
But they got another girl down here, Amber, that is better, more, more helpful.
I agree, it's a totally different ballgame in West Tennessee. They're so helpful, you just, we don't have these issues, you know, with the soil scientists, you just go across the lake and it's, it's just different.
We've got families that built, that started building their house way after us, and, um, since they were, from the ground up, they were done, done, and ready to start building, you know, and done, and they're complete, they're completely done with their project before we even got started, before we could even get to the point of getting those soil scientists here.
I'll tell you what this lady did in West Tennessee, she said, her boss, her problem, how long had he been waiting for it to happen? She said, "My boss will get on and help you get this done." And what he did was, he, our emails, we'd been corresponding on, he attached his email, Tim Jeanette's email, where if I emailed this girl, environmentalist, uh, it would automatically go to them other two emails, well, that got somebody's attention, but it didn't get handled by, uh, Tim Jeanette sent a word back to her that, that we was, you know, pushing, trying to figure out what's going on. And if somebody was watching, the scientist just heard talking hooks, it wasn't very much, long spread out periods between talks. So, essentially, he should have wrote that up as a form of complaint, and all he did was turn it around to her, and nothing got done, you know, except that she wrote us a nasty email for calling somebody else, and we should have called her, well, that hadn't worked in 10, 11 months, so, that was a response of that.
Well, the big conflict in the COVID, 'cause I've been working in Tennessee for about 30 years, in Kentucky 43 years, I've done about 9,000 septic systems and repairs in three states, and, uh, what I disagree with is they went from very lax above James Charles Bruton, and the systems are so cheap, I couldn't afford to come down there and work. Then it went the opposite direction to what we're talking about here. Now, on repair, I don't know if any of y'all have done any septic system repairs, but the repairs are a whole lot like what it was before all this happened. I can go out and put in 10 feet, any way I wanna do it, as long as it meets Tennessee code, with a $100 inspection fee, and that's it. No soil scientists, no evaluations, it doesn't matter if it's limestone, whatever, you can do that. For example, I did a job in another county, I won't say where, 'cause that'd be a name dropper, for a flip house, and she was requiring a pump to pump the water downhill.
Yeah, I can agree with that too.
Okay, so then, she said, "Now, if you say, you've been out there, you've done your own evaluation, and you say you can do it without a pump, okay, now you have to have a soil scientist, it's gonna cost $3,200, you gotta wait seven months." I said, "Well, I don't agree with you, because I can do anything I want to that meets COVID." And she said, "You can." But she didn't tell me that. So, I went out there and I saved my customer $2,500. She wanted 24 to 30 inches deep, which I agree with going shallow, but I was able to put in 45 and a half inches deep, part of it, and get her around, um, her requirements. And we just threw her requirements in the trash can and did what I wanted to do, and saved everybody money, and it got it done that week.
That's something I've tried to help people with, and when I didn't, my daughter didn't get to use that, hey, that was my text, we asked, "Well, I've never seen any money she gonna be with, but I'm gonna help enough people to gain back that $80,000." And what you were talking about, repair, if you buy a piece of land that's got a house on it, it needs tearing down, that's the first thing anybody wants to do, is tear down a house, clean it up, and do all that, that's the wrong thing to do, don't do that, 'cause if it's got a house on it, you can buy that $100 repair permit and do what you wanna do, I'll give you the sample. And at Montgomery County, if you know none of this, like any other, hasn't dealt with it very much, don't know. He went and put a double-wide trailer in it on a piece of property he owned forever, for his daughter, he just thought he'd get a septic system put in. He already had the trailer set, ready to go, except for the septic though. Well, he told him, "No, you couldn't do that thing, make it move or not do it at all," or whatever. So, he comes in and he asks him, "What can I do?" "Well, let me go look." I went and looked, there was old house still there. I said, "If you did have a septic system on it," he said, "You ought to know where it is." I said, "You're gonna have to find it." So, anyway, I said, "You go, you go ask for a repair permit, and they will have to put you in a system, let you put in a system." And that's what he did, for being told, "Totally no to doing a repair system." And it worked, and he went on that business.
So, then he was able to remove the house, but then...
Yeah, then he prepared the house down, do whatever he wanted to, but he used that old house, he gave him a repair system done for the double lack he put in before he asked for a permit, 'cause he didn't know any better. The other thing is, there's been some people arrested in this county for doing, for putting in a system without a permit, and they were good people, but just didn't know any difference. They were arrested later to put me in a permit. One particular I'm talking about was going over Christmas holidays, 'cause he'd been living in his house 15 years, and was taking that all stock... And he's taken that all stock up. He quit working over the holiday, but nobody would stay working. He couldn't flush his toilet. So he gets somebody come out and put in a system later. They just happened to buy the groundwater. They saw it and arrested it. Now that's wrong.
And that's why we've got the issue in Stewart County now.
It's a big part of it.
Exactly, exactly.
It's a big part of it.
Those of us that knows that situation and then, I've been in real estate here thirty years, and I know what it's like when Bob James was here, and then I know what it's like when Daniel was here. But after the situation you're talking about?
Yeah.
That's, that's the problem in Stewart County right now. And it's going to be as long as the one that's in charge is in charge.
How does a groundwater person get enough power to have somebody arrested? Something they didn't even know they was doing wrong. Why should they be arrested? Maybe they found it, deal with it, whatever. Why are they arrested?
The man that done it and the, and the homeowner.
And he wasn't only arrested for such thing, one of those guys are the same way. Take his way to where you are with him. Yeah. What are we going to do to fix the problem? That's what I'm here for. There you go. You're the mayor. Who are you going to call?
So we, Mr. Allen Heaton?
Yeah, I'm just starting this process, okay? And here's a big problem with TDAC. They don't tell you what the process is, okay? I find this man says, he can put me one in. He says, go online, collect permit. I do, okay? I didn't fill it out correct. I get an email back in about two hours, and I corrected. I get an email two days later, says I need a soil scientist. Okay? And they was kind enough to furnish you in a list, had a little over forty people on it. They just published a new list on the twenty-third of January. It's got about, at the max, fifty-five people on it. This is for the whole state, okay? I finally get a soil scientist that'll talk to me, okay? Because in doing all this, there's two across the river that won't come over here. There's one in Montgomery County that won't come over here. So, and the soil scientist says, okay, now you got to have a survey. And I'm going. And he explained it, so I could kind of understand that, okay? But the survey guy I talked to yesterday, that's been surveying in the state for forty years, is well-versed in all this. He says, yeah, they publish that list. Hey, but let me tell you something. Probably half the people on that list as soil consultants are inactive, okay? Now, here's my background in the federal government. I was a lead quality assurance specialist on stuff, okay? If you're going to put a requirement out, okay, you got to give the contractor the opportunity to be able to meet whatever you're saying, okay? With the state going to private soil gas, okay, that ain't right, okay? Because to start with, what are you going to do if you buy a piece of property and say it's less than five acres? Because I've even heard stories of more than five acres, okay? The gentleman back over there in the corner's got a fifty-five acre plot, okay? They're wanting a soil scientist, okay? It's crazy. You know, it's like whoever in Nashville's in charge of Montgomery and Stewart County, you know, they're reading the regulations or whatever, and they're interpreting them to where they have to do to us the amount of work, in my opinion, okay? Because I research this stuff thoroughly, okay? He's got a job going on right now. It's ready to close. When you look at that permit, it's got a statement right beside it for final inspection. Says that you have to have permanent power to that lot, is basically what it's saying, okay? I can understand that if you got to put in some kind of pump system, okay? But for a regular gravity feed, okay, they could use that statement on there to disapprove your whole process by saying you're not meeting our requirements. On my lots, I've already got power and I got water, so that ain't a big issue. And it's going to be a gravity system. You know, if I can get a soil scientist, you know, which is just crazy because, you know, they get to charge whatever they want since they're independent contractors. And as far as I'm concerned, right now, the state of Tennessee is stealing from people.
Exactly.
By having you pay that five hundred dollars upfront, okay? Not knowing, because they don't tell you what your requirements are. See, if I knew all this, I would have started this months ago if I knew I had to give a soil scientist, if I knew I had to give a surveyor, okay? The surveyors that I've talked to, they come down and they're basically, well, I understand part of it. You know, but they got to know the whole lot boundaries and stuff. But where septic systems got to go is in about a hundred and twenty-five by a hundred and twenty-five spot for one bedroom, okay? This is way too complicated. TDAC is not in the business of customer support. And if I was in charge and I was the governor, they'd be looking for a job. That's how serious this stuff is. They're killing the economy for Stewart County. They're killing it for contractors, the realtors, builders.
Landowner. And with the, with the grip thing, and I'm, sorry, but with that grip thing, I can understand making sure that the septic and everything's going to be on the person's property. But you know what? Owners have their deed filed in the courthouse. And the septic is nowhere near the edge of the property line. I can understand with the fact for us, we had our two, his property, different names. We made a deed with both of our names in it. So there's no question the fact that those two lots are our lots. Why?
Yeah, I have something else.
Why do all this?
I'd like to follow up on about the lot size. You know, the rules have changed about septic systems having secondary proper secondary site for the secondary, in case your primary goes bad, you need a secondary site for your septic system. Well, the lots thirty years ago, forty years ago, weren't sold with that in mind. So if, you know, I have a lot beside of somebody who has a septic system, his lot's the same size as mine, they're liable to say that I don't have secondary site, you know? They need to grandfather that in somehow, you know? Otherwise, you know, I just inherited some property that's worth nothing to me. The land surveyor I was talking to yesterday, and this is going to become a problem for realtors some years down the road. The LPJ's Resort, which is now Brownsville Resort, there's a half a dozen probably double-wide mobile homes down there. They're on really, really small lots that probably should have never perked to start with, but somehow they did, okay? And according to the surveyor guy that I'm talking to that's been doing this for forty years and is really well-versed in all this, he says that if their septic ever fails and they try to get it repaired or replaced, they're screwed, period. Because they're not going to get a permit. They don't have enough land to put in another one, okay? So basically, that late front lot just become worthless, you know? I know there's going to be different situations and different everything, but the overall consensus, as I'm seeing it, is TDAC needs to be providing a service. They're not providing that service in a timely manner. It should not take you no more than six weeks to get an approval, get a guy out and say, yeah, you can put it over here. Let's dig a couple of holes so I make sure that you ain't digging into a fifty by fifty-foot boulder and wanting to put it there or something, you know? This ain't rocket science.
Then you got to help, you got to help them inspect it before you cover it up.
And if the, it was approved, the permit was approved, and they come back and do a final inspection and denied the first approval that was done by somebody else?
That's what the, the, some things that confuse a lot of people is, if you got a soil scientist who has went to school and got a degree, how are they superseding what? How is the EPA and the state superseding what they're saying? They should be the final science experts. They should be, they should be the ones that are, we can do this, this is how it should be done, that's who we should be listening to. That's just my opinion on that. I've went back and forth.
Well, you've heard it said, we don't care how they do it up north. But comparing state to state, the three states I've worked in, Illinois, when I first started working there, I could do the perk test, or the homeowner could do the perk test. I felt like that was a conflict of interest that was going to cause problems. So I hired a guy for all my projects up there that actually helped soil map that part of Illinois. So he could sit at his desk and figure out exactly what we needed to do, and I'd send him a hundred dollars for his opinion. Kentucky trains their environmentalists to go out and check the soils. They have three weeks to have that completed. It ranges from a hundred and fifty dollars to three hundred and fifty dollars spent on which county you're in. So you're going to have an answer within three weeks of the time you apply for your septic system evaluation, and then there's a separate permit fee. Why can't Tennessee, compared to surrounding states, come up with something besides this ridiculous time-consuming delay that the other states around here are not doing?
The governor can fix this. The governor can fix this. That's where you got to go.
I'm going to call the governor's office in the morning.
That's where you got to go.
Blueberry, you have to run for governor.
No, sir. First of all, environmentalists, most of them, first of all, the state is so corrupt because of the stuff that's going on. Most of the environmentalists don't have the, they don't have the brains they was born with. And everybody in the state is calling these soil scientists, look on your phones if you don't believe me. Most of these so-called soil scientists is getting their degree online and then charging seventeen hundred dollars to come out and map a property. I've built houses and remodeled houses in this county for forty-five years, and I'm out of it now. I had one, Tim couldn't have said it better himself. I had one sewer system that failed after four years, and the lady put all of her cat litter in the septic tank, flushed it down the commode. And they agreed that that's what happened. If you dig a hole and then do a perk test within that hole under the subsurface, in the subsurface, and that perk test passes, then you should be able to, we didn't used to have to do perk tests here. And Tim said that he put those things in, or it was put in twenty years ago, and he hasn't had any problems. And it was, you know, the state don't mind taking our taxes. What's happened is they hire all these people from these small counties because they got the regulations in the big cities. But then they take inspectors, they build subdivisions in the county, big, you know, around Tennessee. They, they put them in floodplain areas and do all kinds of stuff. They couldn't care less about us. I hope I get a chance to talk to some of them. And I will call the governor's office. I'll call Bill Lee's office in the morning.
We all should.
We all should.
We all should.
If y'all, I mean, the reason why we're having this meeting is here is so we can, I'm going to use Mr. Obie for an example. Mr. Obie Garland back there is over in Henry County. He got, he called me one day and said, we got a problem with these. I wanted, you know, and we got the TDAC and the state fire marshal's office. That problem solved. But we followed, I hate to say this because I'm not the one struggling like some of you guys are, but with the septic issues. But we followed these steps, and is that, is that pretty accurate, right? We had a meeting, you held a fantastic meeting, the state come down. We said, I told them, what we were after was a need for our county, and this is a need for our county. But I, we left there that day out. Have you had any more problems with that? Absolutely. So, yes, I mean, if you guys want to call the mayor or the governor's office, it's great. I mean, do that, but also know that, let's, let's give these guys a chance. Just, and it's not going to be a long chance. I'm not saying six months from now. We, if they're not going to work with us, we're going to know that before then. They're, they asked in this meeting, we're filming it, they're going to know what we're facing. We have a plethora of people here that know exactly what's going on in the county. So they're going to know this afternoon what's going on in our county. I will give them to the end of the week or so to let them grasp what happened here and what's happening here today. And then I'll be setting up that meeting where it'll be our representative, Mr. Reed, and then I'll be setting up there, guys. Ms. Blair, she has been, so far, she's been awesome to work with on my end. As far as me picking up the phone, she answers every time I call. So let's work through the next couple of weeks and let's see where this goes. I'm not discouraging you from calling Governor Lee's office, y'all, you're on people, do what you want to do. We're here having this because there's a problem. So we're going to get to, I don't know what the answer is. I was kind of hoping, you know, we would, that's kind of like where I'd like this meeting to go. For some of you guys with experience to tell, to, what do you think it needs to go?
Could they not give a waiver of the fee temporarily until they get the issue figured out? Because if they're not having to pay the five hundred dollar fee, and everybody in this room knows it's going to cost you three times the money to get your soil scientist there, at least that helps offset that cost to help it. There are some people who barely are going to be able to afford this, to get this done. So at least that's an incentive to help offset the cost temporarily until they can find a solution to it.
How did they used to do the soil perk test? Was it, you used to get the permits through the health department, and they did the inspection?
They'd go out and drill, do a perk test, they'd drill the hole and grab the water, see how long it took to do this.
Somebody, the hand, the hand drill.
Soil scientist is the best way to go with all of this way. It just depends on, you really need to know more about the soil than you even know.
But this ain't Nashville either. You know what I'm saying? I feel like, I'm all for the codes and the rules, and I remember when septic systems used to be fifty-five gallon drums in this county. It's a lot better than it was, and there's a need for that.
I'll tell you, I did a repair, I got a house one time, and so I had a soil scientist take that person, you know? And I turned down the deal on the lot because he said it was marginal and it was a high price model. But all the realtors called me and said that he threatened to sell it to somebody else. They went through all this field that I'd already knew about, it was marginal soil. But the realtor didn't understand it all. So he called me and asked, and I said, well, I know myself, but I'll find out. I called Tim Jeanette. He explained to me, he said, somebody's already been down here and drilled on this lot, it's not soil scientist in West Tennessee. And he advised me not to back. Well, long story short, the man came down on the price, and I lived in marginal soil all my life, and I believe there's a lot of it in the work that they say won't. I bought the lot, got a repair permit, put in a system, give it to them. Then your boy come out and inspected and got it all laid out and looking good. He said, it looks good, and me, I think it worked. And there we go. One man then backed off of it, and the seller refused his price, four thousand dollars, basically paid for the system and everything. And I put it in, and I mentioned, put a house in. So they're condemning a whole lot of this ground that could be worked out if they could track it.
That's why I said this isn't Nashville. I'm just saying.
I think, I think the resolution you're looking for is kind of where we're going with this. Yeah, we're going to send this to them, we're going to have this meeting. Find you a designated person to kind of be the subject matter expert, one, two, three, not it, on this subject. And that person's the one that maybe opens the meeting and everything. But they, at least give them some time to research, do whatever they got to do, but have that subject matter expert representing Stewart County in the meeting. That's going to be your start because especially it's coming as well. If you can get the state to come up here and have another meeting about this issue, subject matter expert's where it's going to have to be. And that's going to have to be somebody representing Stewart County and all these fine folks here, you know?
We've got a good representative. Regardless if you're Democrat or Republican or Independent, it doesn't matter. Jay Reed is doing a really good job. And he is the chairman of the wastewater committee right now. And that's the reason why I made one phone call to the state. They, they called me back and said, well, we'll get to you in a few days. I called Jay to reiterate that we really had a problem here. I hung up the phone with Jay, ten minutes later, I got a call from their head legal assistant that said, hey, how can we help you?
Yeah, and then so, he's doing a great job, I'm sure.
We're going to have a, we're going to have a really good chance.
Make sure you have a resident of Stewart County that, besides him.
It'll be a, I don't.
Be somebody from Stewart County who can maybe open this meeting and kind of put into some bigger words what our actual problem is and what we want to see. and what we wanna see happen.
Move away, from what I'm hearing here, this sewer may have been a problem for a while. This ain't new. This has been going on for a while. And it's not right from what I'm hearing back here. You go to West Tennessee, and there are a whole lot easier to deal with. They are back this way? That shouldn't be, Jay Reedy needs to know how things are going on back this way. And the only way you're gonna get anything done is Jay Reedy and your senator, state senator, and all to get something that's changed. Now, it shouldn't be, "Well, I feel good about where you're West Tennessee, but not back this way." And that shouldn't be, it should be the same all along. And the only way you're gonna get anything done is through Jay Reedy and our representatives, and that's the way you're gonna be able to get it done. And they need to be calling Jay Reedy. Y'all need, if Jay comes down here, all y'all need to be here. And, and voice your concern to him. And, uh, that's the only way you're gonna, but the sewer, I don't know where they come up with five acres at, but there's a lot of people here that came forward to buy five acres and turn around and build a house. And to me, it's holding progress down from what they've done, and...
So we have a gentleman here in the county now, his name's Clint Ellis. I know Mr. Adam, worked with him before. He's retired with the state. He's, he's got twenty, twenty-three years in. He married a girl here, they moved back here over to Cumberland City. He wanted to be here today. He works with Eric Milliken's bunch, and they're, they had to go down to Georgia because they had a problem back home. But I'll tell you that to tell you this, he wants to be involved because he, he said, "When I worked there with the state of Tennessee, I was held by a standard." Over, he worked out of the Jackson office. He said, "I was held by a standard, and I had ten days, once I received the application, I had ten days to get in touch with that person, get what I needed to get done, and tell him a yes or a no." And he said that- That's, that's the guy that you need to represent to the county. He said that has failed by, he's going through, he, he said that has failed by the West side now. He said it, it could be ten days or ten months. He, he said, "That's not acceptable." He also told me that, um, the, the few soil scientists that are over here that are local, pretty close to us, have said the same thing to him that they've said to a few of you. They're not coming to our county. They have no reason to come to this county. We're held to a different standard. I don't know if we are or if we are not. I'm telling you what he's saying, and with twenty-two years of experience, and he's saying we're held to a different standard. If we're not, we're not. Just show us we're not. And if we can prove we are, then we will prove we are. But we wanna be held to the same standard. We've got too many horror stories in the counties right now. Mr. Wallace has got one of the worst stories going on there. It's probably in the state of Tennessee. It makes absolutely no sense what he went through.
You go, you go down here on Kentucky Lake, and of course, they're in the real estate business. They know more than I would know. But you try to sell a lot down here on Kentucky Lake, uh, and they're requiring five acre and all that. Hey, you can forget all that growth there.
It's not just, and that's not just the few. All of them are like that.
Is, is it state statute with the five acres, or did they just, is that new state statute?
Five acre. And, and that's simply, well, I mean, I, I don't think where you're coming up with five acre then.
That started out in Shelby County.
It's because of the Sepphic site. A long time ago, when they did the work.
But you're talking about the girls, stopping the growth. What about those people like us who don't have, have property down at the lake and don't have that five acres, you know?
That's what I'm getting at. That's what I'm getting at. I don't worry or require-
The county's handicapped in so many ways right now. Number one, we can explore. There's grants out there, and as soon as I get over those parts of Rexbury, I wanna go after another utility grant. There's grants out there where we can start exploring sewer in the northern side of the county, you know, up that way, uh, down seventy-nine. But we can't even do that right now because we signed a contract with a company who has got four hooked up to a slush pond right now, and that pond is done. It should be expired. It's completely full, but we're still held to that contract until we can dig in and get with our, our lawyer in the county and let him work on it. We can't run sewer up seventy-nine. Think, uh, Charles Bart, uh, Senior told me at lunch the other day, he's running at about thirty percent sewer capacity. He could hook to it, was that close, Charles?
About fifteen percent.
Fifteen percent. I, I, yeah, I think he said it on a rainy day, is when he was talking about thirty, when it storms and there's clay pipes and it fills the sewer up. But we can't even hook to the city sewer and run it up seventy-nine because they got us handicapped. I just want the state to understand that. We're not out here just complaining we're handicapped because, you know, and I'm not saying they didn't need to do that. I'm not fussing at anybody. The high school is perfect, and I love it where it's at. They did what they had to do to get that high school up and going because we definitely had a need for it at the time. However, we can't run sewer down seventy-nine. It's not our right. You know, that, that contractor has that right. And until we get with them and, and get out of that contract or, or come up with something new, we're handicapped.
And West, and the west side of the county, the rights, the rights are gonna be given up there.
So, I mean, this is not, this is not, your county needs to go out there and put sewer lines in. If the state wants to go find that contractor, I guarantee you we'll find the money to put sewer in.
I just wanna say one more thing, and I wanna say a thing else about these environmentalists. Every time it comes to flood, you see all kinds of trash going down the river. The Tennessee highways, it's full of trash, trash bags, trash everywhere. I know roads that you can't, it, it's just so littered up. And I tried for years to get the state to put littering signs up in the state of Tennessee. If environmentalists care so much, don't care so much about the waterways and all this trash, you guys are being picked on. Stewart County's been picked on by a bunch of corrupt officials. That's all it boils down to. Like I said, these soil scientists, a lot of them, get their degrees online. If you don't believe me, look it up.
I've heard that, no soil scientist is only you, you talking about, that's what's happening.
Who, one lady mentioned about the surrounded scientists not to come to Stewart County. One in particular, I'm calling names, I've been dealing with him for thirty years. Never had an issue. Pick up the phone, he was here up until a few years ago. Anytime you called him. Now, he said he would not come across that bridge. Now, there, there's a reason.
He used to work for the state, I know he's come back.
There is, there is a reason.
He used to work for the state, has been part of it. He said he ain't coming to Stewart County.
We have definitely got a problem. We got a problem.
Everyone's gotta remember too, T-Deck is over the state fire marshal's office. A lot of these permits and stuff go through the state fire marshal's office. So without getting too deep into it, I would just urge everybody to be here because it's gonna be more than just hearing a problem on the, uh, waste side or the water side. State car marshal's office is the one that's enforcing and arresting people. They're one of the C codes, they're one of these rural counties that do codes. That's why they don't mess with the counties that have codes or have some kind of zone. I would also, since we're on video, if everybody that doesn't mind, at least say a district or where you're at, Indian Mountain, if you wanna say your address where you've had issues. You can say it on there or even sign up.
Yeah, I put a sign up sheet over there. I mean, I know somebody don't get involved. We talked with, uh, I had a friend of mine reach out to the soil scientist that told us all that he, but he, he said he doesn't, you know, he's, he's getting close to retirement age, and fighting the state of Tennessee is not something he wants to do right now. And I completely understand that. Um, so, but, so if you don't wanna put your name and your district up there or what you do, whatever it's fine. Um, but I would encourage you, when we have this next meeting, it will be, uh, they, they've all stated they would be here. So they, they've stayed in town and time again. Uh, maybe Mr. Reedy will be at a session and all that'll be over.
Will our flag minister be here?
I haven't talked to him, but I can reach out to, to Mr. Stevens. The only thing about him is, is they have great luck over there, because I talked to their mayor over in Leakly County and, and over on that side. They don't have any issues. So he's really, he's gonna be coming over here across the river.
I mean, that's where I'm at. Why is it much different between West Tennessee than Middle Tennessee? Well, I mean, it shouldn't be no different. Well, I mean, if, if they're easy to deal with in West Tennessee, when they supposed to call up here, they oughta be easy to deal with. And, and that's uncool. That's uncool.
If we legitimately have a soil problem, if, if there's an issue here, and, and Ricky and Mr. Allen, you guys would know that, I, I don't know that. So if there's a legitimate soil issue, tell us how to fix it. Tell us what we need to do and help us. But what I'm hearing is when we call up there, you're getting rudeness and, i-if you get a call back, you know, I, I've talked to them. If you do get those back, we won't service, and, and then did work with us in Tennessee.
They don't want, they don't want it to be rude to me.
I've gone out and been- I've talked to a few people in here that's spoken with them. Now, they're not rude to me, uh, when I called both times. They were nice, the one girl didn't get back, and the other one did.
Well, they give you vague responses too. They'll get back with you soon. Two, three months. But at some point, if somebody without getting into too much, but if a, if a normal system costs you a thousand, if you have to go through this process that they're trying to make most of you go through, what does that bump it up to a percentage wise?
Twelve thousand.
Yeah, easy.
For one bedroom.
So the impact is not just a couple thousand dollars?
No.
We, we're seeing the market price of land in general is fairly cheap in Stewart County soil. And just to get to the point of seeing if we pass or fail a perp test can cost, in some situations, more than the, the acre of land that somebody wants to buy.
Is that just the soil, soil scientists or?
That's just getting to that point. That's not getting the system in. For me alone, I'll tell you mine. I got, I have less than an acre of land.
No, that's not true.
And mine with the soil, with the, with the soil scientists, the surveyor, we monitor black soil grid, everything. I was forty-eight hundred dollars for it, and I only gave two thousand dollars for my piece of land. And that was at the point where then they said we failed because of black soil. And then there was nothing else I could do, so I was out with that money.
So if you went to, if you went, the guys that installed it, if you went to a regular gravity system and they made you do a pump, what is that percentage higher? How much higher is that?
The people that wrote for us ended up at sixteen thousand dollars with the pump system in.
And Mr. Brandis has a mound system. Did they tell you how much that cost for him?
He's got fifty acres and able to put in a forty thousand dollar system for one house.
That's already big.
They won't make, put that mound system in and run that pump, two pumps, and, uh, and they, the two-way lock, they saying he can't get it from Montgomery County. He's gotta come out of a NASS deal. Haul it, haul it down here, because it's set up here at Carstew, it's got too much dust in it. And that's gonna cost, don't count how much it gets locked haul. But Dander done patented one, old man, and he took in twenty-one to go ahead and build the house. Then, uh, they fired him, you know, and they got rid of him. Now, and, uh, we just having a hard time. I can't get it to him and give a permit up there.
Many districts have not had it, it's Cumberland City? Anybody that would come to City? Indian Mountain, I know.
Clint, Clint lives in Cumberland City, and he, he, he had his own, he had his own-
Rather than wait, what about bigger octopus meals?
I say it's countywide. It's countywide.
Because you know, years ago, when, when, uh, Robin was in office, we spoke with the state. We didn't get to this point, but they claim, like Mr. Brandis said, that it's marginal soil, and it's up to them. It doesn't matter who you send, it doesn't matter what you do, it's up to the state. If they feel like the growth is there, if the spacing is right, that's, that's the answer we got. So I'm glad Mayor got this going because they couldn't, they're gonna come down with the thirties, and they're gonna want it. So just, I urge everybody to get here and have your hats on so you can try to explain this to them, what you're experiencing, and not just necessarily that you want a system. They're wanting, they're wanting to hear a fix, like Mayor said. But the fix is, I don't know, I don't know what the fix is.
By the time they come, Mayor, they'll have the answers, I promise you.
Yep.
We had, how many we have? Fifteen people from the state Capitol at my meeting. They already had the answer.
That's right.
We didn't have that.
We technically sent a, a little spill and got a free meal out of it, uh, from Mr. Garland. But now, other than that, they, he's right, they, they, they came with the answer when they got out of the vehicle. And the state fire marshal-
So we now have no control over our own, some county government or rules or any, any of that? I mean, I, I'm asking, you said they're gonna come up with their own idea, their own fix.
Well, no, I mean, it wasn't a fix, but they knew what they were coming to that meeting about. And that's the same style meeting we will have the next meeting with the state representatives and things. And when the fire marshal got there that day, I firmly believe, and I think all of us that were at that meeting believes, that he got out knowing exactly what he was gonna say at the end of that meeting and get his hand clapped and get back in.
Our county doesn't have codes and zoning, as all of most of you know. State fire marshal has a number of them. They have over these rural counties. That's, their attorney will be the one here to talk to you, but there, that's where your enforcement's from. That's where a lot of this is. It's not necessarily the soil scientists or the people that's saying yes to a perp test, but it's the state fire marshal's office that wants to ensure.
And they were wonderful to work with. They were wonderful.
I told Mr. Blair Beatty that. I said, "I, I couldn't have been at a better meeting." Uh, uh, just, it was completely different in, in sitting in front of their face than it was talking to anyone on the telephone. So, uh, we hope we get that same service. Uh, if we don't, you know, I, you didn't get any answers today. I'm sorry about that, I don't have the answers, but this was a necessary meeting to get to them. We had good turnout. They will see that it's clearly a problem across the county. And, uh, I will keep you posted when we have the next, this next meeting. I'll be sending this, thanks to Ms. Tina once again, I'll be sending this to both offices this afternoon. And, uh, I'll try to get a, try to get in touch with them, maybe Friday or so. And just give them fair time to digest what, what's here today.
Hey, I wanna ask him, Charles, a question. I wanna- I'm not very smart, but what does the fire marshal got to do with the septic system? I mean, I don't understand. That's only the very ones.
Codes.
None of them because we don't- It's because we have them.
It's codes. They just happen to fall under the same office. They're, they're under the same.
I understand they're being under the same thing, but I mean, it, it's-
He really does, he's just the same boss.
That septic system ain't gonna catch on fire, not even.
No. When they get here, they'll all have weapons on. They're not here to be did by a real one.
Does anybody else have any, anybody else have any questions for the law to come up?
Not a question for Charles, okay? This meeting room would've probably been packed today if it had been advertised in the paper. Or, and I like to make a suggestion, on the county website, there needs to be a, a finer, you know, what's happening in the county, like, like this meeting here, okay? And don't put it on the calendar where it's buried in the website. It needs to be out on the main page where everybody can see it. Because when I got ready to start this building process, what do I, smart guy will go, "Hey, the county's gotta have something here, right?" There's absolutely none. So unless you can find somebody that's just starting this process, there's no place to go. Even the T-DAC don't tell you none of this stuff.
Well, you're one of the horror stories that come in later.